By troop thirty-one with Scout Master Steve McHugh leading the way. Gentlemen, if you would please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, in the love of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Felice, do you have your computer up?
Yep.
Would you like to read the board affirmation statement?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd ask that the board approve the agenda asked presented.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Treasurer's Act report. Mr. De Vaffel. Treasurer's monthly report for January twenty-fourteen includes the financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments recommended for approval totaling three million, three hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Motion seconded. Any discussion on the treasurer's report? Roll call vote please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Schedule bills, Garrett?
Schedule bills for February twenty-fourteen recommended for approval this evening totaled one million, eight hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
And President Quigley?
Yes.
Summary of investments?
Yes, the treasurer's information reports five-three through five-five are information only, including summary of investments, state funding update, as well as the trust account activities for December through December thirty-first of twenty-thirteen. If you have any questions, we have been answering at this time.
On the summary of investments, or I'm sorry, state funding update, that number's starting to creep up. We were at about three-point-eight million, now we're at four-point-nine, so we're at five million dollars in short, not shortfall, I guess, it's just delayed funding.
Right. One of the things we added, actually Treasurer Board added this time around is the aging of funds. You'll see that at the bottom of that exhibit. I thought it was a nice addition that she put forward to give you a general idea of how many days we're behind. And so, as you indicated, we are four-point-nine million dollars in arrears, four-point-two of which is greater than thirty but less than sixty days old, and we've just got a very small amount that's greater than sixty days.
Which is far better than it's been in the past years.
Correct.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the board to approve consent agenda items six-one through six-five, six-one board meeting minutes, January twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen, six-two executive session, meeting minutes, January twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen, six-three gifts for independence and Tibbet Elementary Schools, as well as LuKansic Middle School and Romeo-Ville High School, six-four approval of a ten-year safety survey report, and six-five trips for Humphrey Middle School and Romeo-Ville High School.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Socora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
And President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, student recognition, pillars of Valley View. Member Campbell will be presenting the first one for Bullingbrook High School. Will here Ms. Timmer? Miss O'Connell?
It is with great pleasure that we recognize Katie Timmer as a pillar of Valley View from the kinetic wellness department at Bullingbrook High School. Katie is in her seventh year of teaching physical education where she is a professional learning team and has designed and written the curriculum for PE2 cardioaerobics and dance. She is also a coordinator for Bullingbrook High School's Sports for Heart program, which has fundraised over five thousand dollars towards the American Heart Association. Katie coaches both boys and girls volleyball at the sophomore level at BHS. Katie is a graduate of Western Illinois University and is in the process of working on a master's in special education from Concordia University. Katie is a real asset to Bullingbrook High School and Valley View School District. She is also a great teammate.
Next, Member Felice, still at Bullingbrook High School.
It is with great pleasure that Bullingbrook High School's Science Department recognized Stacy O'Connell as a pillar of Valley View. Stacy has taught for eight years all levels of biology as well as physical science and zoology. She has a master's degree in educational leadership where she researched effective implementation of small schools within large schools. Stacy has always completed, has also completed an internship during the summer of two thousand thirteen with Brookfield Zoo where she wrote the field trip curriculum aligned to the new generation's science standards. Besides being a teacher mentor, Stacy is coach of softball for six years and currently is an assistant varsity scholastic bowl coach where she ran from tonight to get here. It is a privilege to have Stacy on staff at Bullingbrook High School and we are proud to honor her as a pillar of Valley View.
Good evening, I'm Dan Labrie, principal at Humphrey Middle School. Choosing a pillar to represent your school is always a difficult choice, however, this one was an easy choice because of the winner we're having. The person that deserves to represent Humphrey as a pillar is Tom Frenzel. Tom is the lead building maintenance person at Humphrey Middle School. Tom has been a resident in Romeo-Ville for the past twenty-seven years, has been at Humphrey Middle School since two thousand and seven. Maintenance personnel are often overlooked, but Tom is dedicated to the operation and care of our building. Tom does it all for us. This dedication is really shown over the past winter. Everyone is aware that he's out there moving snow and salt to make traffic in Watkins area safe for everyone. He then heads into the building and starts drying off floors from salt and snow tracked in from students and staff. It's just been a continuous cycle the past month. He's dedicated to making our building a safe and operational for our students and staff. Tom, thank you for all you do. You deserve to be a pillar of Valley View School District.
All the maintenance crews, for all the hard work they put in. Guys are plowing on Saturdays and Sundays. The schools are open on weekends for events. Those guys are out there getting the parking lots clean, getting the sidewalks clean, and I want to thank them all because I know that they're not just working from six o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon. Those guys have been putting in a lot of overtime this winter, so thank you all.
On behalf of our assistant principal, Teresa Bolson, the Jane Addams community, our staff, I present to you eighth grade Mustang Kimberly McKay to present our pillar of Valley View.
Good evening, students, parents, teachers, the Board of Education, and Dr. Mitchum. My name is Kimberly McKay and I am honored to present the Jane Addams pillar of Valley View to the best teacher in Coach Wright. This individual is Coach Wright. I've known Coach Wright since I was in the fourth grade. She was my inspiration to start Bible in the current day. She has treated me as one of her own, she is also an outstanding teacher. I learn something new from her every day, whether it's about Bible, school, or even being a good person. Ms. Wright also knows when it's time to goof off and when it's time to get serious. I know if I ever have trouble, I can count on her to listen and help me. I love Coach Wright and she might not know it, but she loves me too.
Good evening. It is my pleasure, I am the principal of the Valley View Early Childhood Center, to honor our pillars. I'd like you to imagine for a minute being a parent who has concerns about your three-year-old child. You hear the Valley View Early Childhood Center can help you and your child, so you make the call. Your first encounter will be with Amy Bain, our dedicated secretary, or Griselda Felchuk, our experienced assistant administrative assistant, or our compassionate parent liaison Gloria Vera. These women live by the motto, "People don't care what you know until you know they care." This belief is manifested by their warm and welcoming personalities and willingness to assist all who walk through the doors. They work closely together and take the time to listen to parents' concern while providing the necessary information to start our potential parents on their journey to the Valley View Early Childhood Center program. It is a privilege to work with these women and honor their commitment and dedication as it aligns with the Valley View pillars.
Scout recognition. Mr. Klopfer, I'm sure you're somewhere.
Good evening again. Walter has been recognized for achieving the level of Eagle Scout. Over a six-year period of time, he moved through the different levels from tenderfoot to second class, to first class, to star, to life, reaching the highest level this year of Eagle Scout. Walter is a senior with a grade point average of three-point-eight. He would like to attend Lewis College to study flight navigation. Walter's project was working with the local VFW post, building over a hundred and ten, rebuilding over a hundred and ten memorial crosses that are on display annually across from the Bullingbrook Village Memorial. On behalf of Bullingbrook High School, I present Walter Klopfer.
Young Mr. Klopfer indicated to me he is a senior, he has no interest in reliving his senior junior year, so with that said, we have a... I'll read this, read that. Whereas Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas more than two million young men have attained the rank of Eagle Scout since the first Eagle Scout Medal was awarded more than a hundred years ago, and whereas it takes a true leader to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Walter Klopfer has been active in scouting since he was in first grade, and whereas Walter has performed an outstanding public service by leading a project to build and paint memorial crosses and stars of David for the Bullingbrook VFW post to use at Memorial Day ceremonies, they also use them at Veterans Day ceremonies, and whereas Walter is a junior, senior, says right here, senior at Bullingbrook High School who is involved in chess club, ROTC, model aircraft club, JROIC, Kitty Hawk, and whereas Walter formally became an Eagle Scout on the sixteenth of December two thousand and thirteen, now therefore being resolved on this day, the tenth of February in the year two thousand and fourteen, that the Valley View School District, three-sixty-five U, Board of Education, faculty and staff are extremely proud of Walter Klopfer and congratulate him on all his accomplishments in the school district and in the community. Wish all this outstanding young man nothing but the best in his post-secondary education and his future career.
Good evening. Just to clear a few things up, I am a junior. I am a junior. I may look like a college student, but I am in fact a junior. Also, I am part of troop one thirty-one. Thirty-one was the pack I was with when I was a little bitty Cub Scout. But, um, I digress. But aside from that, I'd just like to talk about my project for a minute. This project just happened to be by fate because I was looking for Eagle projects during the summer of last year and I wasn't having any luck, though Will County Forest Reserve is not very talkative. So I met up with the VFW post during an ROTC event and he's like, "You know, we got these old crosses, do you want to build some new ones?" I said, "Sure." And so, over what took about a month, the entire month of October, I built one hundred and ten memorial crosses for the local VFW post and they will be up this year during the next Memorial Day service in May.
And she's going to do even better. You should be home watching the Olympics, shouldn't you? Getting tips?
Good evening, my name is Tricia Rollerson, I'm the principal here at LuKansic Middle School, and it is certainly my privilege to stand before all of you this evening to recognize Paige Reitberg, an eighth grade student here at LuKansic Middle School. Paige is a gifted figure skater that competes at the national level. She is without a doubt a very talented young lady, both on and off the ice. Once again, she has gotten off to another miraculous start in two thousand and fourteen by being recognized as novice ladies upper Great Lakes gold medalist, novice ladies Midwest sectional bronze medalist, and novice ladies national silver medalist. Two thousand and thirteen was also a great year that was filled full of outstanding accomplishments for Paige. While being a dedicated figure skater and putting in countless hours in preparation for her numerous competitions, she has also maintained a cumulative grade point average of three-point-five through her middle school career. It has been quite a treat to watch her progress from sixth grade to eighth grade. Her mom always emails me upon the completion of each of her competitions to let me know the outcome. While she will be moving on to high school next year, I will still anticipate receiving those email updates so that I am up to date on how she just performed. In closing, you would never find someone who is so humble in regards to all of her endeavors. Paige always strives to do her best regardless of the setting. I believe the quote that she has posted on her website sums her up best. "I may not be there yet, but I am closer than I was yesterday." With her high level of dedication to both academics and figure skating, I have no doubt that she will go on to achieve great things. Paige, I along with the entire LuKansic staff congratulate you on your many accomplishments and we look forward to celebrating all of your future successes with you.
She's a pretty good public speaker, talked to us about what she does, so that's pretty impressive. And hopefully in four years from like maybe tonight, we'll be watching you on TV. Next up, Illinois Music Education Association All-State Choir.
At Bullingbrook High School, it's wonderful to be able to announce these students. Each year, the National Association of Music Education of Illinois hosts an all-state music festival where the top students in the state choir, band, orchestra, and orchestra combine to make up a large ensemble for the all-state music performance. This year, Bullingbrook High School is proud to recognize three students who are honored to be a part of this event. Jonathan Slowick, step up please, a senior submitted a composition for vocal ensemble and out of hundreds of submissions was recognized with third place with his piece called "Of the Sweet Imprisonment." Can you give him a round of applause? Jonathan Worleton, you stay up, stay up there. Jonathan Worleton and Sarah Tomy were both selected to participate in the honors choir and all-state choir. They both auditioned in October and their scores were high enough to include these in the elite ensembles of the best vocalists in the state of Illinois. They traveled to Peoria at the end of January and rehearsed for ten hours each day and performed along with all the best bands and orchestras in the state. They are truly all-staters and it should be recognized not only by Bullingbrook, but also all other performers in the state. They are amazing students as well. Let's give them a round of applause. And they have a thirty-second selection, if you don't mind.
This was put together in the last thirty seconds? Well, you done done me and I bet that you felt it. I tried to be cool, but you're so hot that I melted. Felt light through the cracks. Now I'm trying to get back. Before the cool done run out, I'll be giving it my bestest and nothing's gonna stop me but divine intervention. I reckon it's again my turn to win some or learn some, but I won't hesitate no more, no more. I cannot wait. I'm yours.
Cheerleaders, led by Coach Felice. Tracy Felice. How was your extra stay in Springfield, girls? You can only get so much at the Perry Capital Convention Center.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchum, President Quigley, senior leadership, and the Board of Education. I'm honored to be here and recognize their, I'm honored to be here and to recognize the accomplishments of our varsity cheerleading team from Brooks Middle School. Our success would not have been possible without a few people and the businesses that I'd like to list. At first, I'd like to thank Dr. Wood, Ms. Forte, and Angie McDonald for their support and their help. I'd also like to thank our sponsors for this year who helped us in funding our state trip, Batteries and Bulbs, Summit Chiropractic, Bullingbrook Park District, Bullingbrook Chamber of Commerce, For Kids' Aid, DuPage Township, Plotkey Asphalt Inc., Ken McConaughey, Pick Maintenance, and of course, the Board of Education. We did very well in various invitationals. Rockford East Invitational, we took first place. Bullingbrook Invitational, third place. Pontiac Invitational, first place. Oswego East Invitational, second place. But the most important were the championships. At the ICCA championship, we took seventh place, so we finished in the top ten, and in the IESA State Championship, we placed nine. I am so proud of these young women. I would like to introduce these young ladies. They exceeded farther than I ever expected them to do and I know they will go on and do the best that they can at the high school level. We first had Mia Asim, Haley Carr, Jocelyn Siznaros, Dina Felice, Cassidy Hanson, Kalen Hoffman, Kiara Jones, Janine Cadow, Jennifer Key, Lindsay Knight, Alyssa Kucon, Husana, I'm so sorry, Alyssa Lopez, who cannot be with us, Alexis Maldonado, Gina Merite, Tiana McCain, McLean, Brianna Noonan, Emily Nakovia, Melissa Pichenko, who cannot be with us, Kayla Perry, who cannot be with us, Emily Romero, Sonia Stetursky, Maggie Stikowski, and Adriana Thigpen.
We were going to stand up and photobomb. For those of you who don't know what that means up here, that means you stand up and muck behind their picture while they're getting a picture taken. By the way, I'm going to guess, this is probably as quiet as you girls have ever been as a group. Board certified teachers, national board certified teachers, Dr. Mitchum.
Mary here. Miriam Alonso. Two Valley View School District three-sixty-five U teachers have achieved the coveted national board certification issued by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, better known as NVPTS. Bullingbrook High School history teacher Cher Murek and BHS bilingual ESL teacher Miriam Alonso earned this honor. The stakes are high and expectations for students and teachers continue to rise with the demands of the global economy. Students today must be able to solve problems by applying what they have learned in a new and unexpected way, said U.S. Secretary of Education Arne and unexpected way, said U.S. Secretary of Education Arne Duckton. As our nation's most accomplished educators, National Board Certified Teachers are well positioned to move our students, workforce, and country forward. Cher has been at BHS for eight years, most recently teaching modern world history and three sections of honors world history. She also is the faculty sponsor of the BHS National Honor Society. A former teacher at Supervisor West High School, she holds an MED in curriculum and instruction as well as a bachelor's degree in social science from Concordia University. Mary Alonzo, who's standing before you tonight, teaches bilingual health, consumer education, world history, and English as a second language. She came to BHS ten years ago after teaching English at a Mexico City public high school for three years. An adjunct English instructor at Joliet Junior College, she holds a bachelor's degree in English as a foreign language from National Autonomous University of Mexico and a master's degree in literacy education with a focus on bilingual and ESL from Northern Illinois University. The NVPTS is widely recognized as a source for the highest standards in practices that lead to improved teaching, leading, and learning. National Board Certification is a voluntary assessment program designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to embed ongoing school improvement in schools nationwide. This achievement through performance-based assessments and testing that takes one to three years to complete. While state teacher credentialing programs set the basic requirements to teach in each state, National Board Certified Teachers must demonstrate advanced teaching knowledge, skills, and practices. Completion of the NVPTS certification process signifies that teachers have developed and demonstrated the skills required for an accomplished educational professional. Congratulations to Cher Murek and Mary Alonzo, two of the finest teachers Valley View School District has to offer. Thank you.
All those different schools, when you're walking around the house on a Saturday, what sweatshirt do you wear? NIU? Listen on reports from my right, please.
I'll make one to add on to the National Board Certification. For those of you not familiar with the process, it's extremely rigorous, including moments where the teacher has to tape themselves teaching and then self-evaluate themselves to be better teachers. I'm gonna list their five propositions. Teachers are committed to students and their learning. Teachers know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. Teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. Teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. And teachers are members of learning communities. I believe we only have twenty-nine or thirty National Board Certified Teachers in our district. I see one, other one here is, if you're a National Board Certified Teacher, could you stand up? Just, there we go.
As you know, the Illinois General Assembly, they introduce hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bills that are germane to school operations, budgeting operations. The state of Illinois has now exceeded nine thousand pieces of legislation because that's how many new laws we need. About a thousand of those are dedicated to budget issues and the rest are dedicated to other aspects of government and laws. We will be going through the ones we find detrimental to the school district. There's already been a few that have been identified. There's also been some that we think are positive to the school districts. And going forth, I would encourage you to talk to your local legislators as you hear me report on some of those, particularly the ones that are negatively impact schools. And those are typically regarding finance issues. But we have several state representatives and senators that represent Valley View School District, and please reach out to those people and let them know what you think about the actions they take in Springfield because it's really important that they hear from people. Because if they don't, they live in a vacuum down there sometimes. So pick up the phone, call their office, shoot them an email, send them a fax, and they, they will respond. Down to my left, nothing? All right, moving on. Audience participation, is anybody in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? If so, please state forward and state your name.
Honored to serve as the president of the Valley View Educational Enrichment Foundation. This is a volunteer, non-for-profit organization founded more than twenty years ago, but became active twenty years ago to support the teachers and administrators of the Valley View School District. It's a volunteer organization that designs events and reaches out to the community for financial support. In the twenty years that we have been actively serving the community, we have raised and delivered one point one million dollars in funds for several hundred programs that are designed by the teachers and administrators, and parents have also designed some. What we're doing tonight is getting the word out about our twentieth annual dinner and auctions. It will be held Friday, March twenty-first at the Bolingbrook Golf Club. There will be information about this event, there are flyers at the doors you came in. Information will be on the Valley View School District website, and we also have our own The foundation was put together to allow those who are reaching into their own pockets to fund programs for students, and that would be the teachers, and give them financial support in designing some amazing programs. It's touched all the schools in the district over the years, and it's touched a number of different programs, educational, music, and science, and physical education as well. We wanna, we're gonna be honoring those who've been large donors over the years and supporters of the foundation. It's gonna be a semi-formal event. Last year, we did a country theme, so you saw me in a cowboy outfit. I won't be wearing that outfit this year, I'll be in a tuxedo. I dress whatever way the committee tells me to dress, but, so I'll be, I'll be there in tuxedo this year. One of the things that we, the committee decided to do, and some of them are in the room tonight, I've been fortunate in attending the Rotary Club Top Ten Dinner over the years. One of the favorite questions is, you know, tell us a story about your favorite teacher or parent who influenced you in life. And in recognition of that, we're accepting donations of bottles of wine, and we'd like some stories about a teacher who impacted the lives of your students. What we'll do is we'll take those donations along with the stories and have them on display at the dinner, and they'll be available for a donation. Now, they can range in quality, I would not go for the thousand-dollar bottle of wine, that's not necessary, but there are plenty of good wines for less than that, and then we'll get a chance to celebrate those who made an impact in the students' lives. So that's the flyer, with more information will be on the school district website this week, and there is information on our website and the phone number as well. We will have one other event, we're gonna make it, it's gonna be a, really, all of our events are fun, but this one's really special for us and we encourage folks to come out and attend. Now, we wanna get, have to get the word out to the community as well and anyone you know who has lots of money and donates to great causes, and make sure they show up, or at least they can make a donation online on our website. And registration for the dinner is available online. I did get confirmation today that the thousands of invitations were put out in the mail, so they'll be hitting the doorsteps in the next few days.
So, I was at the first one of those, as was Mr. Waller. I had a lot more hair and a lot less weight.
Me too.
His hair was a lot darker then, and he weighed about the same. Was there anybody else here that was at the first one twenty years ago? Just the two of us, huh? It was, oh, somebody in the back. Chris Dorich was the guest speaker, and he was a Chicago Bear at the time, and had just come over from the University of Notre Dame to the Bears, and was a very inspirational speaker, and it was a great event. And who knew that it would last this long and he'd done as much as you have done, and you've been involved in that from the get-go. He should get a lot of credit for that, so I'm going to give you a round of applause. Mike, thank you.
One other thing, we are going to, we haven't done this in a while, but we're gonna have a big band orchestra, and some of you may know Dave Rice, so Dave Rice and his orchestra will be performing that night during dinner and dancing, so bring your dancing shoes. I won't be dancing because, oh, I may, we'll see. But I don't want to injure anyone else on the floor. So it is about the schools, it's about the teachers, and it's about the students. And we are hoping to raise lots and lots of money. We do have over thirty grant applications for the upcoming school year, thirty-nine? Thirty-nine grant applications for the upcoming school year, and we want to be able to fund each and every one, so thank you again.
Next up, please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, I'm Beth Donna Freo, I'm from Bolingbrook. Been a resident of Bolingbrook since nineteen eighty-nine. I had five children in the district over the years here, three that have graduated and two that are still in the district. A lot of concerns over the last few weeks. I got, kind of felt like maybe I had been asleep at the wheel the last few years with my kids in the district because things were going along okay, and three of my older children have already graduated from Bolingbrook High School. And because of the Mr. White situation, the last few weeks, a lot of parents have kind of been more involved lately and really looking into what's going on in our district, and we want to be more actively participating in what's going on. It's a little intimidating to stand up here, you guys are all the board, and I'm just a mom of five kids. Thank you. I really liked what Loz said last meeting about maybe a community forum with the board members because there's a lot of questions. There's, social media has a lot of stuff flying around about what's going on in our district, and I would like some of it cleared up as to what's true and what's not true. I hear there's a lot of lawsuits pending against our district. I don't know if that's true. I know if there are pending, I know you can't discuss details, but I'd like to know how many lawsuits are pending against our district. I've done a lot of research in the last few weeks, and, you know, there was an article just last summer in The Patch that said that Valley View was gonna have about five hundred and sixty thousand in administrative cuts over the next three years. Part of those cuts were combining some positions and eliminating positions, and a lot of the teacher aid positions were eliminated. I have a first grader who really benefited from having an aide in his building. We went down to two aides now in our building. My first grader is not making adequate progress. I'm worried about that. I'm working closely with the staff at the school, but there's limited resources. They can't put people where there's no people to put. Okay? I have a first grader, I'm worried. I don't want him to get behind so that we have problems down the road. When I hear things like, there's gonna be five hundred and sixty thousand in cuts, but then I see things like huge pay increases, it makes me concerned. I want to know, I would like a dialogue with, I think a lot of people want this dialogue. Social media has a lot of us parents very concerned. We're talking a lot on Facebook and communicating with each other a lot of these concerns. So I would hope that the board would want to work with the parents and want to answer these questions, and make us understand maybe the reasons behind some of the numbers, why some of these positions were taken away. I will tell you, my son is personally suffering from what's going on in this district. I take that very personally. Okay? I'm concerned now about the gun issue that happened in Bolingbrook High School. You know, I, we hear things, you know, it was a BB gun, it was this, it was that, but we are hearing things about zero tolerance, and is there gonna be zero tolerance? Is this child gonna be back in Bolingbrook High School? What's gonna happen? So I think there needs to be a dialogue. I think, Mr. Mitchum, you were so adamant about putting your new view out there and making all of these meetings that you had. I remember all these community meetings you had. I think now is the time for community meetings. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of parents who are hearing things, and we want answers. And I think we have the right to get those answers. We're the taxpayers, we're the parents, and I think we have the right to ask that of our board. I think transparency should be of your utmost number-one priority to let us parents know what's going on, and especially when I have a child that is suffering academically. He's suffering academically because of what's going on. That's not okay. You put the children first, right? All of them? Right? All of them?
Absolutely.
So, I don't want to be adversarial, I don't want to point fingers and accuse, but I'm telling you, there's a lot of stuff out there in the social media that is not making the administration look really great right now, and I'd like to get to the bottom of it. I think community forums would be a fabulous thing. You guys are here because you wanted to make Valley View better, so let's work together to make Valley View better. Let's have this dialogue, let's answer these questions so that it's not rumors, it's not, did this really happen, did this not happen? And above most of all, make the academics and the safety of our children a number-one priority.
Can we talk after the meeting? Are you gonna stick around?
Sure.
Please do.
Ma'am, wait, I'll say this. Why don't you ask a couple of your questions now? And the reason I say that is you said we should have a community forum. The law won't allow all seven of us to be present at a community forum. It's the law, it's not Valley View.
I'm sorry, what was that one more time?
The law will not allow all seven of us to be present and participate in a community forum.
How many?
It's called two. It's called the, it's a breach of the Open Meetings Act. But right now would be a good time. So perhaps the law will allow us to talk now. Perhaps you could ask a couple of your questions now.
Okay.
Just a couple, maybe.
Just a couple, okay. How many lawsuits are pending against Valley View School District right now?
You know, as a, I'll say this, and they can talk specifics, as an organization our size, I mean, we have, just like any big organization, we have lawsuits from slipping falls, workers' comp, IP issues, parents perceive or have, we have lots of different issues. We're a really big organization.
I understand that.
I'll let somebody speak to the exact number, I'm not aware of what that is.
Our legal counsel doesn't know, but we can find an answer out.
That would be great. I would love to know.
I don't think it's as many as probably have been portrayed.
I'll tell you what I've heard, I've heard like three alone at Romeoville High School. That's what I'm hearing.
And that's probably not an unfair assessment.
You know, some are years.
One of the things, like I said, was the budget and the spending. If Dr. Mitchum got this huge increase and these aides all got let go, I don't understand.
And that's kind of the problem with social media, people can say things under fake names, aliases.
Your website doesn't lie.
His increase was two percent.
The numbers don't lie.
Yeah, his increase was two percent in the one year he got his tuition reimbursement. That was, that was his increase, was two percent though. But those numbers don't lie, you are correct.
Okay, because this is off your website, this is this year's salary is two ninety-four, five thirteen, and then I printed last year's salary, which was on your website, one ninety-one, three forty-five.
Salary increase was two percent on the one ninety-four. He was given a tuition reimbursement per the contractual agreement that we gave him when he signed up.
So does two ninety-four includes the sixty-five thousand tuition reimbursement?
Correct. And next year, if you read the same data, it will be back to, because the tuition reimbursement is considered salary by the...
So that, this will at least...
That will go back down by sixty-five thousand next year, correct.
I'm just curious, because like I said, I'm just reading like an article from The Patch, the two assistant superintendent positions were gonna be combined into one, with that Ms. Smith was gone and that Ms. Kinder is now overseeing all of it, and it just said here, "On plan to cut administrative costs, the two assistant superintendent positions will be combined into single executive director position with a reduced salary of a hundred and twenty thousand. Kinder and Smith both receive a salary now of a hundred and thirty thousand, six seventy-three." Well, right, that's just what I'm writing, and Ms. Kinder is making a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred.
She took on a responsibility.
Well, this is what I'm saying. This is, this is what's printed, is quoted from Valley View, and then your numbers don't match this. So do you see why we're confused?
Well, let me explain it for you. Ms. Kinder, there was two positions, Ms. Williams' position and Ms. Kinder's position, I believe, at a net of like two sixty. So then Ms. Kinder took over both six, twelve, and K through five at a price of, I'm sorry, I think at a price of one fifty. So there's the net savings between... of one fifty. So there's the net savings between, she did get an increase because she took on greater responsibility, there was a position cut that reduced our overall cost because Ms. Williams is no longer here, had a salary of, whatever, she's one twenty, one thirty, whatever.
Hundred and thirty is what I'm hearing. But this is just my...
So there's a net savings there.
Right. But there was a big increase, too. So, I mean, there's, I'm not an accountant. I just, I'm, you know, trying to do the math easy in my head, but it just doesn't seem to add up sometimes. One of the last things I will tell you guys, that I'm pretty sure the board may not know about, but I have a daughter who's deaf, and she was in the district, she graduated two thousand and eleven, and I, so I worked very closely with the hearing itinerant teachers in the district. And back in about two thousand and five, we found out there was not the required personnel, technical personnel to supervise those hearing itinerant teachers. And we had me, Dr. Schopstall, and John June Laird to take over that position in two thousand and six. And he took it on as part-time position, and he oversaw and provided technical support to the hearing itinerant teachers. From what I understand now, he was, his contract backed this past fall, and that nobody is in that position, in that technical position, which is required by the Illinois State Board Administrative Code Twenty-three, subtitle A, chapter F, section two-two-six, point eight-hundred. They're out of bounds. So...
If you don't mind, I can address that. The new evaluation system, based on PARA and CIL-7, all evaluators or certified staff are required to go through the evaluation training. Mr. Ju was not, had not went through the evaluation training, and he was not interested in going through that training. So therefore, he could no longer evaluate. We're currently looking at co-ops in the area. We are looking everywhere that we can find to see if we can find someone that is certified by the state to evaluate, and also that's the hearing impaired certification that's required. So we are aware that we are working...
There's a search done for that?
Yes.
Because it's not just evaluating by technical assistance in that specific field of hearing loss and disability with one?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right. Well, thank you for answering the questions. And the last one, I was just to say, the gun issue is, I'm surprised not more parents here who talk that. I, it scared the living crap out of me. I mean, there are things, and whether it was a BB gun or not, what are we going to do to, a kid can gun into any school, but I guess from here out, is there zero tolerance? If a child brings a weapon into a school, is there tolerance?
Yes.
It's still a Valley View policy?
Yes. There are several rules of fractions in our books that are zero tolerance and always will be zero tolerance.
Okay. All right. Well, I thank you for your time, and if I have more questions, I want to know, can we come here and ask them?
Absolutely. You don't have to come here to ask. Call me, or send me an email, or call Jim, send him an email. We'll get back to you.
And I strongly encourage you, even if it's two board members and Dr. Mitchum, reach out to the community. Because I think if you do that, it's a show of good faith that you're trying to squelch any rumors or untruths, and just get the answers out there. That's all we want. All want what's best for our kids. And that's all we're asking for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Please state your name and where you're from.
My name's Tiffany Proudie. I'm from Bolingbrook, and I've lived on March twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-eight, when I was born.
Nice.
I've been in Woodview and Brooks, and now I'm at BHS. I'm a sophomore, and I'm fifteen years old. This is the time of my life where I'm starting to form my own opinions about things. And I just want to say, with the recent gun threat in our school, there's been a lot of fear around. And people were scared and crying, and I know people who have anxiety disorders, and they had breakdowns upon breakdowns over this. And everyone keeps saying, "Oh, it was just a BB gun, it was just a BB gun." But what people don't really truly realize is that a BB gun can kill people. And it has. In two thousand and ten, there was an eleven-year-old boy named Dallas Barnes, and him and his uncle were playing around, and they thought the BB gun was empty. And they had, and when they came back, someone had loaded it with pellets. And they were still playing, and the uncle accidentally shot Dallas in the chest. And it broke his skin and went into his heart and killed him at eleven years old. Now, I just, I'm here to say that guns can kill anyone, especially at close range. I knew three people personally who could have been shot very easily that day that the gun was brought into the school. Three. Three of my closest friends could have died. The security was uptight for that Friday, after it happened, of course. After that, it wasn't there anymore. They did winding checks, but you could tell it was on every eighth child. I could count out the security counting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Step aside, please. I knew who they were going to pick before they even picked them. They didn't change which way they were counting. They didn't change what number of child they were counting. If a student really wanted to bring in a gun that next day, they could have, easily. What I'm, with the gun threat, and the fact that the student was, believed that the gun was real, and the gun looked real, and guns are known to look, BB guns can look exactly like a real gun. And I have pictures with me today, if you guys would like to see my proof on that. There are BB guns that look exactly like a real gun, and when you're having it held at you, you can't tell the difference. In the heat of the moment, with the adrenaline going, you cannot tell. The student thought that the gun was firing, misfiring. The student thought that he could kill people with that gun. I want to know what the board and the district are going to do to keep us safe at BHS. Because I will tell you, when you are walking down that hall and you hear teachers screaming that there's a gun, and you have to run to your next class to be safe, you're not told what's going on, you're just told to run. People are pulling people into classrooms because there's the very real possibility that someone's going to get shot. Nobody knew it was a fake gun, or that it was a BB gun. And the way that Mr. White wasn't given the credit that he really truly should have had is disgusting. Mr. White stopped that student from committing suicide. Because even if that gun had pellets in it, holding that gun to his neck, he would have shot himself and died. Now, I'm fifteen years old, and I can see all of this happening before me. Why is it adults can't?
I really appreciate your comments, and I think you speak with tremendous passion. I'm going to ask Dr. Mitchum to kind of review some of our security procedures and what we're doing. But before I, before I ask him to do that, you know, once a month at your school in the library, there's a dedicated team, this has been in place for five years I've been on the board, and Mr. Brown, I don't know how long it's been in place, but Mr. Brown, the head of school district security, heads a safety committee, that talks about issues just like this. And we've been talking about issues just like this for years. We have invited students to participate in that committee before. If you're interested in participating in that committee, please, by all means, get with Mr. Rand or Mr. Brown so we can get you on that committee. I think you have a voice that could be beneficial. Now I ask Mr. Mitchum if you, you know, kind of talk in general about some of our security...
Can I ask one more thing before we continue?
Sure.
It was leaked to the press that the student who had brought the gun into the school had also, when he was in seventh grade at Brooks, had brought a knife into the school and threatened the teacher with it to raise his grade, which is the exact same situation he did with the gun. Why wasn't he expelled then, so he couldn't come into a high school of thirty-five hundred students with the possibility of killing them?
Well, number one, that's not accurate, because it was, quote, leaked to the press. Students, individuals, families, and so on have certain modicum of rights afforded to them by federal and state laws. The young man in question may have had a knife at school. He never threatened a teacher or another student with the knife. And it was probably three or four years ago, two or three years ago, whatever it was.
Well, he's a freshman this year, and that would have been his seventh-grade year, so two.
Ma'am, I understand that, but we have to follow certain laws and guidelines. And you cannot deny people access to education based on certain past histories. That said, there's nobody up here, there's nobody up, I can only, I can't go into details. There's certain, there's not a person up here who is not concerned about the health, well-being, safety of students, teachers, faculty, and those buildings. By the same token, you hit, you said, the next day, a student could walk into a building with a gun. It could happen here, it could happen any school district in the country. Fortunately, and very fortunately, nothing came of it. Unfortunately, the situation happened, and we have to deal with it on a lot of different levels. Emotionally, professionally, security-wise, for the teachers, for the faculty, for the students. It's got blanketing layers of things that have to happen. I hope it never happens again. We can't guarantee it won't happen again. I'm not going to sit up here and lie to you and tell you that we could. Because you're not a fool, and nobody else in this room's a fool. It's an unfortunate situation, it's an unfortunate society that we live in, that these situations occur. And I know, I can tell you, there's not a person up here who didn't bleed that day in their hearts because this happened. Not one person. And you sit there and you go, okay, what's next? And it's, you thank God that nothing bad came of it, and that it wasn't a real gun, whether a BB gun or not. But that's kind of how I felt. And I have a son in that building as well, so I kind of know what goes on there, too.
Dr. Mitchum?
I'd too like to thank you for your heartfelt communication to us tonight. Schools in general are what we call soft targets. There are what we call hard targets and soft targets. Soft targets are targets that are very, very difficult to proactively protect. A school such as Bolingbrook High School, it has dozens and dozens of exits and entrances, is not designed to ever be able to, with certainty, prevent a student from bringing a weapon into the school. No school in this country is. If we think back to the Columbine disaster, that school had just, one week prior, purchased tens of thousands of dollars worth of metal detectors that did not prevent those young men from coming in, massacring all those students. So in terms of what we're doing, as a result of that particular issue, we have identified areas within our plan to ensure our students are secure that require further supports. For most of our training, we are trained to react to a potential hazardous situation that could take place in a school as a result of some type of biohazard or a result of some type of threat from a student. So much of our training is designed to react to those things, given that we know, all of us know, with our common sense, that it's impossible to ever guarantee that an incident will never take place in a school. We've also learned as well what we need to do proactively to support better ensuring that we do all that we can to prevent such an incident from happening again. We practice our lockdown drills. We realize that we need to practice those in different scenarios. For example, it's very difficult to practice a lockdown drill during arrival time or dismissal time. But in the, in the event that something were to happen at that time, we all need to be trained. And I don't think we are appropriately trained to react in those situations. It's very difficult to practice a lockdown drill during the lunch periods, because there's four, five, six hundred kids in the cafeteria, a very unsecured area. We need to practice those as well. We can also increase the amount of time that we spend in ensuring that the students who are coming into the building are coming into the building without a weapon. With that being said, however, if you, if you think critically about what it would take to ensure that we check every single child and then secure them in that building, if you think of an airport, where that is a very hard target, and there is only one entrance to be able to get to the plane and get on it. If you've ever been there during a rush hour, so to speak, you may have three, four, or five hundred people lined up to go through those metal detectors. You could be standing in that line for hours.
Two hours, usually.
Hours, absolutely, hours. If you think about what it would take to, to ensure that thirty-eight hundred students and five hundred staff members are actually, go through a metal detector, on top of being able to secure the dozens and dozens of exits and entrances, on top of ensuring that we put the students in a place that is secure, that will not allow for them to go through the metal detector, walk to door number five, have a kid pass a gun, and etc. Those schools who, who actually go through that process, actually use metal detectors, they will maybe do that twice in a year because it literally is an all-day affair. There is no instruction that takes place during those times. So to the extent that that's a viable solution, we have not drawn a conclusion on that yet. But even that would not prevent an incident from happening, because in order to secure that building every day, in the manner that they do airports, would mean no instruction would go on. It would take literally the whole day to do that. So we have identified areas in terms of our training that we need to, we need to solidify. We've identified areas in terms of our reaction that we need to solidify. We've identified areas in terms of our communication that we need to solidify. So we have learned copious amounts of information as a result of this unfortunate incident that will ensure that we reduce the possibility, not eliminate, but reduce the possibility of this happening again. All of us took this very seriously. We understand the gravity of this situation. We know that you all are still suffering from this. We just had personnel over today that was able to debrief me on things that people expect from me very personally, that I will commit to as well. So please understand that we do take this very seriously. We have identified areas in which we can improve both proactively and reactively, because none of us want to ever see any of our, our kids in harm's way. And I too have a very personal vested interest in the safety of not just you, but all the kids in our district.
Because of your sons, correct?
Because I have two at Bolingbrook High School.
Sam and...
And I have one at Brooks.
Sam and Tyler.
Middle, thank you.
Tyler's in my German class.
He's in your what?
German class.
Handsome lad, isn't he?
No.
Also...
Well, he's not handsome?
No, what I was trying to say is that day, I decided to take a different route to my second-period class. German two is on the third-floor D wing. Usually I take the staircase straight down into D two. If I hadn't taken, if I had taken that route that day, I would have been in the hallway that the kid with the gun was in.
My son has expressed the same concern, but he happened to be in the nurses' office that day as well, and he was very thankful. Again, we understand the trauma that you put through. We do not minimize that issue. We will do everything that we can to ensure that we, we re, we re-instill confidence in our security measures, and that we re-instill confidence in our staff and our students, that we will do everything that we can, as a result of this, to protect all the staff and students at Bolingbrook High School. Not just Bolingbrook High School, but all of the schools in this district.
If you guys are trying to do everything we can to prevent these kind of things, why is it the doors are able to be left unlocked? Like, I understand there are certain, like, seniors who get early release and everything, but why can't they leave through door one? Because every day, I see students leaving through, what's the door, over by the A wing in BHS. They'll just leave out any door that they choose. What's to say that they can't leave that door open for a kid to bring a weapon in?
There is nothing to say that. But again, in terms of, in terms of what we can and I do, specific to security...
Fire safety won't allow you to lock doors. That's, that's against the law.
They have to be pushed by doors.
But...
Or what if they have an alarm on them?
Let me, let me...
Well, again, those are things that we are exploring as well.
Let's take this back a step. After the incident in Connecticut last year...
Sandy Hook.
We had a forum here, which a lot of people didn't understand or know about what had gone on in this district in the past several years. gone on in this district in the past several years. Mr. Brown, who's director of security, put together, went through all the buildings when he was hired to review security, not just for, you know, all security, fire safety, everything, things falling off the, whatever it may be. That became what is being used throughout the country for many, many, many districts. There was two years in a row where we put on seminars, hundreds of people came from districts all over the Midwest and around the country. So we do take all safety and security extremely, you know, important. It, it's, it's valuable, but you got one of the best in the country. That guy back there used to be the security director for the Sears Tower.
I won't get to Sears Tower.
Again, again though, I think, uh, an earlier, um, parent spoke and talked about communication. So what I think happens is, you know, I was a member of this community and I was not aware of all the things that the district was doing for security. So we need to increase that communication. And also it's not reactionary. This has been going on for a number of years and incidents that happened throughout the country are looked at like, how can we prevent a new town? We did some very specific things with three elementary schools that we thought were at risk, um, to, to address that. So I really am going to encourage you, or if you're not so inclined, uh, some of your peers, to reach out to us and, and join that safety committee so we can have that student voice and also so you can take the voice back to your peers, to your classmates, hey, these are some of the things the district's doing and hey, we have ideas. You're there every day, just like you said. So if you or your, or your peers are interested, please get with Mr. Brandon, Mr. Brown so we can make sure that, uh, we did that. We invited a student that came after the Newtown, uh, incident and, you know, I know we don't want to extend that, that offer to you and your peers to get involved and some of the very concerns you voiced. You can take some time in these meetings and discuss why some things are done the way they're done. A lot of times there are things that you just don't even know are, are conditioned. So for instance, earlier I heard someone from the crowd say, what about zero tolerance? But they probably don't know that the state of Illinois only lets you kick somebody out for two years. They probably don't know that. You know, they, there's things that we, you don't know till you're in it. So I'm inviting you to get in it and I'm inviting you to take it back and spread it to your peers, um, you know, the, the difficulties in making it secure, but ultimately, the number one thing that keeps you safe isn't security, it's you. It's you and your classmates. That's the number one thing that keeps you guys safe.
May I say one more thing before I'm done for the next?
Please.
Um, when you guys are thinking about security measures as a board, don't think about it as just another high school. Don't think about it as that high school in your district. Think about it as if your children are going to that high school, even if you don't have them there anymore. Imagine if your child were put in the position where they had a gun held to their head because the security measures weren't up to par. Could you imagine losing your child at a school because nobody cared enough about the security measures and the no zero tolerance? Like I said, three people very close to me are within five feet of the kid with the gun.
Tiffany, I'd like to invite you to come with me to the next meeting, the safety and security meeting. Um, I will be there, um, and it's on, uh, February nineteenth, which is next Wednesday, 5:00 PM at the BHS library. And I think it would really be good for you to be there and, um, talk to the different ones that are there and, and really get involved in this. Um, and I had three students at BHS, my youngest graduated just two years ago.
I saw Eric at last year's best BHS.
Yeah. So, you know, it is, it is on all of our hearts and all of our minds. Our kids have been there and, uh, it's frightening for us as adults too. And, um, unfortunately, you know, it's, it's really a sad moment in our day where you at fifteen have to be worried about this.
That's exactly my point here is.
Yes.
I don't wanna feel afraid at my own high school. I don't wanna worry about my education.
I know.
I don't wanna go to college and be seen as the kid from Ghetto Brook High School.
Yeah. So I hope you'll join me on, on Wednesday the nineteenth, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, state your name, where you're from.
My name is Hannah, I'm from Bolingbrook.
What's your first name?
Amy.
Amy.
I'm also a Valley View employee at the Early Childhood Center, speech language pathologist. I have a son who will be attending Bolingbrook High School next year. He's attended, I also am a graduate of Bolingbrook High School many years ago, and I'm wondering if you could please tell us what is the no tolerance policy? It is my understanding that there was a knife brought to school to Brooks, um, in seventh grade. I'm not sure if it was that same student, I guess according to it may have been, but I'm wondering if a knife is part of zero tolerance or how was the knife brought to school? Does the person have to, um, attempt to harm somebody? What is it exactly that constitutes zero, zero tolerance? And then also if this student that was, um, recently brought the gun in, will he be allowed back into our school system anytime soon or at all?
Okay, uh, as number Goo just indicated previously, there are constraints to the law and the law only allows any school district in the state of Illinois to expel a student for no more than two calendar years. Um, that's all the law allows. Uh, beyond that, then students by law have the right to return to their district. Now, within that however, we have a leeway in which to, we are, we are required to ensure that that child has fate, free and appropriate education. Does not necessarily mean that they will get that free and appropriate education within the general education setting. And so although we cannot speak by law directly to this particular incident or to the incident that, uh, has been referenced in seventh grade, suffice to say that he did not bring a knife into that building. Uh, he did not bring a knife into that, into that building. We do have, uh, we do have interventions that we can utilize if we feel that, uh, a student's return to our building in the general education setting, uh, would indicate a clear present danger to students and or staff. And that's something we take very seriously as well. So if in fact we perceive that any student who has been, uh, suspended or expelled from our midst, uh, is a clear present danger to students and our staff, then we will take every measure to ensure that we don't expose them to our general population again. Uh, so to that extent, I can't speak specifically to this issue, but I can indicate that that is, uh, our training standards concerning that. Uh, specifically zero tolerance, uh, there are, there are things that will automatically, uh, ensure that you are at least brought to the Board of Education for some sort of recommendation. Uh, and that includes a weapon, uh, that includes assault to a staff member, that includes gang behavior, that includes mob action, that includes setting a fire in a building. Those things are going to, uh, trigger an automatic ten-day suspension from school and a possible recommendation to the Board of Education. Now again, within that possible recommendation from Board of Education, there are many mitigating factors that we have to consider that have been prescribed by the law, whether or not you have an IEP, whether or not you're a special education student, whether or not you have 504, whether or not you're a general education student, whether or not we have, we have met all of the conditions, uh, previous, uh, to, uh, ensure appropriate interventions leading up to that, to that, to that, uh, rules, uh, infraction. So we have to take each of these cases, uh, individually, so there's not any one room that we could use to make a determination, cause every one of these are individualized. Suffice to say that those five things that I just referenced will definitely trigger what we call a, a zero tolerance in terms of the suspension and the recommendation. Does not necessarily mean that a recommendation for exposure will be upheld. Uh, uh, in most cases, uh, it is, however, there are some cases that are unique, uh, that we discuss, uh, that, that may preclude a particular student from being expelled. Uh, but again, uh, we, even if it does preclude a student from being expelled, we're not going to put a student back into the general population that we have identified as being a clear present danger to students and our staff.
Let me, let me give you a couple of ref- reference that in for you. So you may see on TV that a student, um, brought a plastic knife and cut an apple and in a zero pop, zero tolerance situation, that five-year-old is kicked out for bringing a knife to cut an apple. How we handle that in Valley View is that student at their school, their elementary school, their principal, their assistant principal, their, their team discuss that, discuss what happened with that, with the student, with our hearing officer, and they make a recommendation to the board on what should happen. But anytime an object, I mean, we've seen water guns, uh, pumpkin carving knives because they're going to grandma's house afterwards, those situations are brought to the board and the school makes a recommendation and they list all the factors. He was going to his grandmother's house, it's orange, it looks like a spatula, technically it's a knife. We don't feel like this child should be kicked out, we're having conversations with his parents and with him about the orange pumpkin carving knife being brought to school and the appropriateness or inappropriateness of such. All those things are brought. We passed a policy on gang activity that, to be quite honest with you, we could lose in court. We've been told by our lawyers, we could lose in court for our stance against gang activity in schools and bringing them up for expulsion, but we think, we thought it was the right thing when we passed that policy. Um, so those situations where kids that are involved in gang graffiti or drawings, they're also brought to the board for expulsion, uh, hearings and situations to be determined. So I, I, we talked zero tolerance, but I think you, we have to be reasonable in the sense that, what do you do with the kid with the pumpkin carving knife? What do you do? So each situation works through, what do you guys go through? Ad, ad council?
That's correct.
Yeah, ad council at the schools, deans, these folks, and then they make recommendations to the board on how they think this should be handled. Here's all the, the issues that we think apply and then we make a decision, uh, you know, based on that.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Millar, I'm a resident of Bolingbrook and, um, a couple of questions that I had. I have a daughter who will be attending BHS next year as well and, um, I am concerned and, um, for many things. What I wanted to find out is, um, you know, of course with the, we're talking about the gun issue and the security and, um, I'm a firm believer in taking a proactive approach to things and I know, you know, that's not always possible with everything, but I do feel that there are some things that could be done and I, I'm just wondering, what is being done to train staff members, um, you know, so that they can be aware and look for any possible warning signs or any things? I mean, I'm aware of, you know, your student services staff obviously being educated, but, um, is, is the rest of your staff educated and prepared to, um, throughout your district, not just at BHS, but everywhere, to look for warning signs and possible, you know, things that we need to address to be proactive with our students?
Before you respond Jim, I, I want you to understand something or inform you of something. About five years ago or four years ago, we had some incidents in town and, uh, myself and some of the community leaders reached out to the church leaders and we asked them to help us with mentoring. And this is the proactive stuff that, on a different level, but a proactive, uh, and several of the churches stepped up and provided, uh, people who are willing to mentor students that had to go through the proper training and so on and so forth. Uh, but there were, I know fifty or sixty that were going to BHS and they were sitting with students and having lunch once a week or just talking to kids that were at risk. And, and those are the types of programs that we have put in place and it doesn't just happen at BHS, but throughout the district.
Right. Is it currently being done now? You, you mentioned it was five years ago. What's being done today?
I believe that mentoring program is continuing on.
I can't, I can't speak to that from five years ago. I can't say that the state requires all of our staff members to go through what we call GCN training.
Oh, what, I'm sorry?
GCN training.
Okay.
And that addresses a multitude of things, bloodborne pathogens, uh, risk suicide, risk of harm, uh, uh, sexual harassment, uh, many things. And we're required on, on an annual basis to complete, uh, a multitude of trainings, they're online, uh, that would expose us to warning signs concerning many things to include, uh, you know, risk of harm, uh, to oneself or to others. With that said however, um, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's somewhat canned in that it's repetitive and it's designed to, uh, you know, repetition is the mother of skill, it, it should engrain in us what to look for. Uh, much of that stuff is, is instinctive, but I do believe that you've identified an area in which I think we could be more proactive in, in developing, uh, real-life human being training on, on factors beyond what is mandated by the state that each one of us has to go through every year. So the answer to your question is yes, annually, all teachers are required to be trained, uh, uh, on the GCN network, but I do think that you've identified an area which we could probably, not probably, that we should, uh, be much more proactive in assuring that our teachers are, are more, uh, astute concerning potential, uh, problems in school as a result of changed behavior in students.
And I'm, I'm familiar with the GCN training as I have been an employee and I've been through, through those training sessions and I am aware they're online and I'll be honest, I don't, I don't know that it covers the depth of what I'm addressing.
And I, and I won't deny that.
And, you know, I'm, I'm thinking of perfect opportunities at staff institutes or, you know, teacher training. I, I just think this is a big concern. I, I hear of things that happened on, I, I'm hearing, you know, the security and the lock doors, but I really firmly believe in, in, in educating and, and continual educating of our staff because while I think it's important to have, um, you know, information out there about our curriculum and the Common Core, we need the safety of our students to come first. Cause our students are not going to be learning Common Core and they're not going to be reaching where we want them to reach if they're not safe or they're not feeling safe.
Understood.
And I, I feel that should be first.
May I just make one? This is not, not in response to anything that you have said, but, um, you know, in the, in the past, I'm, I'm gonna make this one comment, public comment, uh, and I, I won't make any more concerning this. Uh, you know, I've been in this district since nineteen eighty or maybe you don't know that. Uh, I've been the principal of three buildings in this district, to include Bolingbrook High School for five years. And, um, I, I, I'm disheartened and, uh, I'm concerned about, um, the, the perception of that school, uh, not just as a result of this incident, but just generally speaking. And I feel like there's been this underlying current, uh, that, uh, has, uh, the fuse has been lit to, for people to express what they really feel about Bolingbrook High School. And as a, as a community, um, and as, uh, the superintendent of this bill, of this district, as well as the past principal for five years at Bolingbrook High School, uh, it, it concerns me, it, uh, it hurts, uh, to see some of the categorization of the children in that building. And I would encourage anyone who has this perception that Bolingbrook High School is out of control or that it's a, it's generally an unsafe place, to just walk those halls. I would be willing to walk those halls with you. Not planned, uh, it could be unfettered access, it could be at any time, but when I hear, and I'm gonna be candid, when I hear people in this community reference our children as animals, that bothers me. When they reference our kids as the ghetto element, that bothers me. When they reference our kids as thugs, that bothers me. When they reference our kids as saggers or shuckers or jivvies or gangland or hood rats or hoods, that really bothers me. And I ask myself, who are we talking about? Who are we talking about when we use that terminology? And I'm really asking the question because I don't know. I have an idea, but I, I'm not gonna say, cause I don't know. And it, I think it's harmful language to use. I think it's inappropriate to use and I don't think that it speaks to the thirty-six hundred kids at Bolingbrook High School. And for that school to be categorized in that way as a result of the acts of a few, it doesn't infuriate me, but it saddens me to see our community become divided along such terms that are inflammatory and from my perspective untrue and it's a, it's a poor representation of a school and its staff and its administration that's trying very, very hard. that's trying very, very hard to ensure all of the things that this community wants for our children. It is no secret that, um, we haven't done a good job at educating all of our children. We haven't done a good job ensuring that there's equity for all. And I will ta, say this to this community from the bottom of my heart. I understand that I'm a controversial superintendent. I understand that there's many decisions that I have made that people do not agree with, but to me, when I look at myself in the mirror every day, I have to ask myself whether I thought I was making the decision based on the best interest of kids. And I couldn't be wrong because I'm not infallible or infallible. But I will tell you that what I'm not wrong about is the belief that every decision I make is based on what serves the best interest of the children first, and sometimes that impacts adults. Sometimes it does. And sometimes we sit in, in meetings, senior leadership meetings, and we labor over information that would dictate, we need to do something differently, but it's going to have a significant impact on people. And it's not going to be perceived, uh, well by the community. So then I have to ask myself, will I be paralyzed by the eventual political fallout or outcome as a result of a decision that we perceive based on information serves the best interest of children first? Or do I, do I support a decision based on information that's been presented to me? Because ultimately, no matter what decision is brought to my attention, I have to approve it and I accept responsibility for that. So whether it comes to changing our programs as, uh, our special education programs because we perceive that based on information that one way of doing business is going to better educate our children than another, um, and we know that that's going to have a, a negative response from the community, um, we can't allow that to paralyze us. We can't allow any, and so I've always said that our rhetoric is so easy to say, hey, students first, what serves the best interests of kids? Let's put our kids first. That's so easy to say, but I would challenge anybody to look at this district in depth and look at the things, what we say about our children. We want what's best for all of them. We believe every one of them has the potential to be college or career ready, which I believe in my heart, and we've never done it, but I believe it. So let's look at what we do and does that match what we say? And if what we do does not match what we say and we do nothing about it because of, of, of pressure from the community who may not have all the information, because of the political backlash, because it's, it's not popular, then to me, I'm not worth sitting in this chair. And if it means, if it means that at some point in time this community perceives that there needs to be a change in this administration because they've lost, they've lost, uh, uh, faith in the direction we're going, I could deal with that and I can live with that. And I will keep my head high because from the bottom of my heart, no matter what you think about James Mitchum, every decision I've ever made or every decision I've ever supported in this district has been made with the intent to ensure that the best interests of our kids are served because we've never done it. In the history of this, of this, of this system, we've never done it and it's never gonna happen without significant change taking place. Now, there are men and women who are far greater than I am, far greater than I am. I wouldn't put myself in the same room with them, who, who history, based on the results of all of our children against two-point-five years of trying to change it. And for anybody up here to believe that that was going to happen without significant trepidation was fooling themselves. So I knew from the beginning what I was up against and what I'm putting this Board of Education up against. People on this board have put their political careers at risk as a result of supporting my initiatives. That does not go, um, unnoticed by me. I feel more pressure than anybody in this community to ensure that we get the results required that will make us comparable to the surrounding districts despite our demographics, despite our socioeconomic sta, status, despite any variable that we've always used as an excuse for why we can't educate all of our children. Uh, so, um, I, I stand by that, I've stood by that, I continue to stand by that. If it makes me unpopular, it makes me unpopular, but I will always make decisions based on the information and the evidence that I believe supports the interest of kids first. And if it means that somehow we have to put them before ourselves and it causes trepidation, then it causes trepidation and only time in history will bear out whether or not we were correct in, uh, our direction or not. In terms of the forums, I have never run from exposing myself to this community with any of our initiatives and I won't run from this one. And so I will avail myself to this community again for the purpose of answering any questions anybody has, uh, concerning, uh, the operation of this district. I only ask that, um, you ask these questions with an open mind, you ask these questions with the intent and the expectation that you will receive an honest answer and that you take that answer at face value. And if not, then there's nothing I can do about that. All I can do is promise this community very publicly that I'll be forthright and I'll be honest in my responses and people may like them or they may dislike them, but I have no agenda other than ensuring that we meet the needs of all of our children because I got three in the system now and one that, that is very successful after being in the system despite its flaws, and that's what I want for all of them.
Tracy, I just have one thing to say. I, a couple of things. Most of you know I don't always agree with Mr. Mitchum, but I have to say he always does what he feels is best for kids, always. Secondly, um, when I was in teaching, which is less than three years ago, uh, we always practiced hard lockdowns and soft lockdowns with the kids. We were trained how to do that. We practiced that with the kids, so the teachers are definitely trained on how to do those. And third of all, uh, we do have a system in place where some of the policemen come in and mentor a lot of our children also. So we do have some things in place for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I just have one other, um, question about, about this. Um, and I, I wanna also clarify my stance up here. Um, basically, my stance up here was just expressing, um, my concern and just, um, I mean, I have many concerns. I have a daughter going into high school, which brings on a lot of things. She's a teenager. Um, so, so yeah, um, it's not gonna be an easy transition with one in high school and one going into middle school. But with that said, you know, I just wanted to, you know, address to see what was being done proactively as far as training. Um, I'm, I'm not up here to talk negatively, you know, about, about the schools or what's going on because I just, that's not my, that's not my position up here. Um, I do know, a few years ago, I'm a very involved parent with my kids in the district and, um, a few years ago, I had volunteered when I had some free time for the fans program that was at VHS and throughout the district. And I loved it and, and, you know, you're talking about walking through the halls. I really enjoyed myself and I was at VHS. That's where I wanted to be. I wanted to learn what's going on here at the high school. My kids are gonna be here someday. I wanna see what's going on and, um, and I, you know, I did it and then I wasn't able to do it because some of other things that came up and, um, my applications took me elsewhere. But I really, really enjoyed it and it was eye-opening and, um, being in there, um, you know, I felt comfortable. I felt, I felt safe, I felt good and I felt like, you know, I was watching the kids through the halls and I was extra eyes and ears. And I'm just wondering, um, I, I don't really hear parents talk about that in the community and I'm wondering if you guys still have that program and what you're gonna do to maybe lead that up a bit.
I can speak to that directly. The fans program were, and I forgot what the acronym was and I, and I was the author of that program was.
Friends, Families, and Neighbors Supporting Students.
And Neighbors Supporting Students in effect. Uh, uh, Member Hanson was one of our fans as well. Fans was, uh, authored by my administration, me specifically. Uh, it, it was not sustained beyond the administration that ran the building at that time. Uh, uh, as a superintendent, particularly, uh, the superintendent coming from Bolingbrook High School, uh, the principal previous to Mr. White, uh, uh, chose not to, uh, continue that program. I, however, am in a delicate position, particularly with that school, because I was a principal for five years. So if I intervene, I micromanage it. If I don't intervene, I, I, I'm uncaring. So I'm trying to find that balance between what my input should be in that school because it's unique to me, being there for five years as opposed to the other twenty schools, because I, I hear and I deal with the aftermath of every decision that I make concerning Bolingbrook High School in particular because of the fact that I was there for five years. So I would love to see, uh, fans, uh, be reasserted at Bolingbrook High School. But, uh, again, that would depend on the leadership at the time. And then one more thing and then I'll stop. I've also just been told that Brooks is launching a fans program this month, so maybe that could be the catalyst for, uh, uh, that as well. Because the reason I, the reason we put fans in place was less about safety in the building. And in fact, I even said this, it was more about dispelling the perception that we have animals in that school, that it's, it's a ghetto element, that we have thugs, that we have, it's gangland, that we got jivers and shuckers and, and hoods and hood rats. I wanted people to get into that. We had people for as far as Naperville who were coming into our building as fans who had no vested interest in our kids, but just wanted to be able to see for themselves whether or not Bolingbrook High School is what people say it is or, or, or it's something different. And I can tell you what percent of the people who involved themselves in that program came away from Bolingbrook High School with a different perception of our students and our staff and our will to educate all of them than they did, uh, before, uh, becoming involved in that program. So we will look at that again.
But like, but like any volunteer, it needs to be grassroots. It really was with Member Hanson, really carrying that weight, uh, to make that grassroots initiative happen. Um, and there are lots of these grassroots things happening throughout the district. RCL has the watchdogs program that goes on. Other schools have other things going on, but they're really grassroots parents that have children in that school, working with their building prin, and their assistant principal and the staff of that school to create these programs. So there's fans, there's basic, there's right, there's the watchdogs, there's groups that I'm not mentioning because I don't know, but they're out there and they exist. So those things really though bubble up more grassroots and that's how they're gonna sustain. There's not really a policy that Dr. Mitchum can say and say, parents be in fans. You know, that, that really has to be the community coming up behind that. And I mean, the, the initial start of fans, you know, Member Hanson would never admit it, but she carried that weight to make that happen. You know, she carried that weight for the training and everything to make that particular thing happen, much like, uh, a former member, uh, who, uh, sat on this board who passed away and I took her place. Debbie Bilowski carried the weight to make after-school programs happen at our school district. Somebody has to carry that weight inside the district. Some parent, some group of parents has to get together and say, hey, this is what we wanna do and, and carry that weight because it's volunteer.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if it was still, it was a very positive experience for me and I'm sure if more parents could, um, you know, participate, if it's opened up, I think, I think it would be.
And if you are interested in even just maybe, I'll just ask you, if you're interested in spearheading that, I can meet with you and, and, and kinda just give you the, how we kinda put it together, um, how we, uh, you know, worked, uh, with, uh, Mr. Brown and how the security worked with us. Um, and at one time, we had over one hundred community members and even the members who did not even live in Bolingbrook because of my profession, um, being a pastor. Um, we really encouraged churches to get involved and people came out, um, for that reason because they cared about our kids. Um, and then it kind of moved over in, uh, you know, um, part of the reason that I really wanted to get behind it was I was aggravated over, I'm having all three of my children come through K through twelve in Valley View. They had great education, they had, um, great opportunities as they are all in college and scholarships. I'm very proud of the education that my student, that my children received. Was there lots of changes up in the upper administration going on? Uh, definitely, but I walked with those, my, my kids the entire time. Um, and I was, uh, personally offended is not like, i- it's a kind of a harder, uh, but I've been in Bolingbrook twenty-two years and it does bother me, as Superintendent Mitchum said, to hear that and to have walked with community members and families that are in this community for two decades and to hear that my kid's a thug and my kid's this and I was like, no, that's not how it is. And so that's why we propelled the fans program is to get the community into the building to see for yourself what's happening and going on. We, and like you said, it, all of it was positive. All of it was positive. So if you want to work, because that's what it takes, it does take a volunteer to work to try to pull that, I can give you all the resources, how we did it, connect you with what you, you know, to be connected with and, and ignite it once again because I think it's important and not because of this incident, I just think our community needs to be aware and, and own our schools. Every school needs to be owned. Every parent, all the communities. But we would have grandmas go in and read, uh, I, I know it was, Patty Chau had done the reading at, um, Woodview. Um, and we gave her several grandparents that just wanted to go read at, with kindergarten. I mean, all of that has to happen from grassroots.
And, and I, I too would be willing to personally support that initiative again to get that off the ground. Uh, again, you know, I go back to our rhetoric, last board meeting, I heard many people come to that podium and say, you know, it takes a village, it takes a village. What's that really mean? I mean, people can say that, what are you willing to commit to that rhetoric by saying if it takes a village, it takes all of us? Because I can guarantee you, the parents that are sitting out there right now, their kids are gonna be successful in this district. I guarantee it. It's, it's a natural formula because they're not gonna let their kids not be successful. They're just gonna be successful. The parents who were vocal two weeks ago, their kids are gonna be successful. I guarantee that they're not gonna allow this district to fail their kid. But we got sixty-seven percent minority kids in this district now, which is a significant, uh, 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 shift in the demographics of the district just ten years ago. Uh, uh, fifteen years ago, seventy percent of the other way. We have fifty-seven percent, eleven thousand of our eighteen thousand kids are on free and reduced lunch. Those children don't necessarily have the supports of the people who lined up here two weeks ago, um, be, because, uh, concerned about the safety and well-being of, of Bolingbrook High School and this district as a whole. But I can tell you, as a parent, there's no way that I'm gonna let Valley View School District fail my children. There's not. I had one with a four-point-two and a forty-five thousand dollars scholarship a year to go to the ball, uh, with everything that we're doing in Valley View. Read takes, nine and ten, uh, therapeutic discipline program, uh, uh, change in the curriculum, all the stuff that we do, very successful. Why? Because there's no way I was not gonna let him be successful. So my, my firm belief, my heart and my soul is in, what about those kids that don't have those parents that come to board meetings and line up? What about the kids who don't have parents out here right now who are gonna ensure that they're, that they are, uh, they get a quality education? What do we do with those children that are in our midst? Do we give up because we don't have the perfect paradigm to ensure that they're educated? Um, or do we stand in the gap for those kids? Do we become that village that we profess we are to ensure that we meet the needs of all of our kids? The ones that we don't like the way they look, the ones that we don't like the way they act, the ones that are disenfranchised, the ones that work eight hours a day to support their mother, uh, uh, till one in the morning and are too tired to do their homework? Uh, do we change the way we do business to meet that kid's needs? Because that kid, to me, is more responsible than my kid ever will, ever will be at seventeen years old with a silver spoon in his mouth. He doesn't have to go home and support his mother and father to pay the electric bill. But what do we do for those children? What do you do for the kid who's a foster kid or the kid who's being raised by grandma? Are those our thugs? Are those our animals? Are those our ghetto kids? That's what I take umbrage with and we've never educated those kids. And so as long as I'm superintendent, I'm gonna stand in the gap for those children and I'll stand in the gap for any kid, but no one needs to stand in the gap for my children because they're mine and I'm gonna take care of them and I'm gonna make sure they're properly educated. But for those kids out there that don't have those supports, that when you flip over our school report card, we're saying, people are saying this district is terrible in comparison to Naperville and Downers Grove and districts that don't look like ours demographically and aren't in the same socioeconomic group that we're in as a whole, we're being compared to them? I wanna be compared to them, but how much greater would we be to vet them if we could educate all of our kids with sixty-seven percent minority, fifty-seven percent who need to have a free or reduced lunch every day because they don't have enough food to eat? every day because they don't have enough food to eat? That's a significant number. So when you flip over our report card and says, "Oh, we're getting about 50% of our kids to be able to meet or exceed the standard." And we only have like 30% who are in that category that should, there's 20% that we're reaching that we, most districts don't reach. And I'll stand by that because I've looked at the research. But 20% isn't enough. We need all of them. In order to do all of them, we can't keep conducting business the way we're conducting business because I got 60 years of information that says that doesn't work.
Ma'am, Ma'am Mitchum.
Tracy?
Tracy, I just want to thank you. You are a catalyst for conversation. You know, your approach up here at the board, the podium, is sincere and honest and I think it has necessitated some much needed conversation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kehart. I'm a Bolingbrook resident. I have two boys who are at Bolingbrook High School and a lot of us are concerned about Bolingbrook High School and the direction that it's going to go in next. And we want to take ownership and want to know for the next principal, what the selection process is going to be? Is it going to be just by appointment? Is there going to be a committee put together of community members or how are you going to go about handling that?
It will be arduous. It will be very arduous. There will be committees with parents, teachers, administrators, community members to vet the next principal of Bolingbrook High School. Mr. White went through the same arduous process that we expect to put the next building principal through. Mr. White is a good man. He's done good things. He's done good things at Bolingbrook High School. Mr. White and I have never had a negative conversation. Mr. White made a decision based on his understanding of what serves the best needs of children as a whole and made a decision based on that. I respect that. You know, I only wish Mr. White the best. I believe that the things he did at Bolingbrook High School in terms of ensuring that that's a safe environment despite the gun incident, because that could have happened to anybody at any time, does not diminish to the extent that Mr. White has made that building safe. It does not diminish to the extent that Mr. White has ensured students own what they should own in terms of responsibility. So my promise to the community is that the good things that Mr. White has done at Bolingbrook High School are paramount on my mind to ensure the success of the next principal because absent that, all credibility is lost. I get it. I heard loud and clear what the community was saying two weeks ago in terms of the positive changes Mr. White has made at Bolingbrook High School that are obvious to all of us. So my promise to this community is that whomever the next principal will be, we do not anticipate or expect that the level of safety and the expectation of our students change.
And for any community members that are interested in being involved in the process, how do you go about doing it?
Give your number to Shelley. We can't have the whole community. And I said it takes a village, but in this instance, we don't want the whole village involved, but we are definitely interested in...
Is there an email address we can, any interested parties?
Sure, if you give your name and phone number to Shelley, we will take it into consideration.
The guy right behind you. Also, I just want to, Kathy, I didn't catch your last name, it's hard for me to hear it.
It's Kehart.
Thank you. I kind of threw out a challenge at the last meeting. All the people who are worked up in what have you, rightfully so, not rightfully so, whatever their opinions are, I hope that those people and yourselves and others will get involved behind the next person as involved, you know what I mean? And take the ownership that we're talking about and dedicate themselves to the community as well because this is a community issue. And I want to take umbrage with what Jim said about the politics of this. There's nobody up here for politics, at least none that I know of. Now, one person sitting here that puts their name on a ballot is up here for politics. They're up here, I got involved in the school board before I had kids in the district. You know, Liz has been on the board for how many years, Liz? 16?
17.
17 years. Mr. Benegas, children are just now getting into the district, so on and so on and so forth. So Jim, I get what you're saying. There is politics and everything and I'm not...
No, I think you misunderstood what I was saying.
I'm not naive, you know, any of that, but...
Let me clarify.
These are people up here...
Let me clarify. Just let me clarify and then I'll let you continue. I indicated that the decision that you were making up here would put you at great political risk if in fact that was the reason you were sitting behind this podium. But because that's not the reason you're sitting behind this podium, you supported many controversial decisions that have brought to your attention by this administration even though you knew that they would not be met with support, generally speaking, by people in the community. So, I did not intend for you to think that you're up here for politics. In fact, I was saying the exact opposite.
Yep. I just wanted to point out, these people up here because they're dedicated to the community and the kids and making the district better, not just for their kids, but for the entire community. And not just for their school, but for the entire district, grade, skate through whatever. And wherever they come from, why they're here, everybody brings something different to this board. But these people, and trust me, the gun incident, there's knife incident, the this or that, we take as much pride when a, you know, BHS wins the state championship, but we also bleed just as much when we hear bad things and bad reflections on the district. And we too say, "Hey, what can we do?" You know, it's like, "Why did it happen? Let's keep it from happening again." And all the people that are here, these kids that need some help, I encourage you, try and reach out to them. We all, I know, we all have busy lives, we have children, families and so on, and work and everything that gets involved. It doesn't take much to, and I hate to use internet words or whatever, but to pay it forward a little bit, because these things are important to this community. And we are extremely diverse financially, ethnically, and it makes, I think that's what makes this town and this district what it is. I think it's a great place to live, that's why I'm here. And I think everybody else here feels the same way. So, I thank you for your...
And thank you for letting people come up here tonight. I'm not really quite sure what the protocol is, when the section, it's comments and then questions and where it's appropriate or, you know, when we get to do it, but thank you for letting us take our opportunity.
Thank you. Moving down the agenda, I'm not even sure where we left off. Student due process.
10.1. Mr. President, I ask that the board approve items A through D as amended.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sokora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Second reading of board policies. Ms. Kinder?
Thank you, President Quigley. With action report 11.1, I'm seeking the board's approval on seven policies that are being presented for second reading. These were presented for the first time at our last board meeting two weeks ago.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a little bit. I think that it's important to note, there are some really interesting board policies that are getting passed here. I think that these are the kind of things that typically in school districts generate a lot of conversation. So we had them up two weeks ago and we're voting to approve them tonight. But things like how we teach religion, the use of animals in education, teaching controversial issues, student and social emotional development, programs for students at risk of academic failure, these are the board's policies on those things. They've been up for a couple of weeks. If you have questions, please let us know. But I think it's some interesting reading on the direction that our school district is.
Right, and thank you for mentioning that, Member Goojus. I would like to point out to the community, since it's a very appropriate topic for the conversation that's been occurring, but one policy is student social and emotional development and there is a lot of work going on in the district in terms of ensuring that social emotional learning standards that are required by the state of Illinois and that we all know as adults and educators are very important for our child development, that we are working hard as a district to make sure that we're covering those at all junctures that are appropriate for our children. And then that goes hand in hand with the training that we also need to improve upon and increase for our teachers and staff for things such as identifying mental illness or signs of risk of harm or self-injurious behavior. So, there is a lot of work, and this is just a board policy on, you know, a piece of paper that may not mean much, but there is a lot of work that's going on in the district that's particular to that social and emotional development piece.
Thank you. We have motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sokora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Grazafi?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hawes?
Thank you, President Quigley. Action report 13.1, consolidated action report. We're seeking your approval on 24 items for certified personnel, 41 for classified and one for administrative classified personnel.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sokora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Hawes?
My second action report, 13.2, resolution number 1472, we're authorizing or seeking your approval to authorize dismissal of educational support personnel employees for reasons other than reduction of force.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Benegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sokora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Dr. Mitchum, superintendents reports.
I have that, President Quigley.
Sorry.
Information report 14.1, representing for your information, information about the extended school year program, commonly referred to as ESY. This is a program for a limited portion of our special education population. To be eligible, students must exhibit considerable regression of learned skills and inability to recoup the loss in a reasonable period of time as determined by their individual education plan or their IEP. The extended school year program will begin June 6th and run through July 2nd and will occur Monday through Friday. Additional information is contained in the report and will be, of course, shared with those families who have children that attend ESY as well as those staff who will be serving in the capacity for ESY. I would like to note that programming costs are covered by reimbursement through Medicaid.
So moved. Oh, it's a report.
It's for information.
I'm trying to go... Next.
Okay, information report 14.2 is presenting for information purposes and will be seeking approval. Information regarding our high school summer programming, our general high school program as well as driver's education program, as well as the Phoenix summer school program. The start date for all of those programs is June 9th. And again, information will be shared at the high schools and will be available online for students to register. The site for our summer school program for high school this summer is Bolingbrook High School.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, with 14.3, we'd like to present you a brief update on the PARC assessment, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness of College and Careers, which is the new state assessment system that is coming to all school districts in the consortium, which Illinois is part of the consortium. I have at the podium with me Kelly Gilbert, who is the Director of Data and Assessment, Astrid Welch, who is the Director of Technology, and Don Tifano, who is the Director of Instructional Technology. And these three individuals have been key in leading the planning and implementation efforts and have been working closely with our building leaders as well as maintenance to ensure that we are as prepared as humanly possible for this rather large endeavor. So they're going to share a few brief highlights and we'd be happy to answer any questions on this periodic update.
There's not a PowerPoint, is there?
No. No PowerPoint this evening. Just a few brief updates for you. Over the last few months, we've been keeping up to date with the information that has been shared, although it has been at best. We also have attended a few workshops through ISBE regarding the PARC assessment. Some key points we'd like to share at this time include technology, scheduling and our building analysis and some next steps. I will allow Astrid Welch to begin with the technology update.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to update you on this significant endeavor the district is undergoing right now. Two key points we wanted to note for you is that the PARC assessment provided a system check for devices in the network and this check was performed throughout all buildings that will be administering the PARC assessment and every building passed that systems check that the PARC assessment provided us. And then the second piece of information we wanted to provide you was that the consortium is working with Pearson, who are administering the assessment, to provide us with a tool that allows us to manage those assessments locally. So that will give us some benefits and that we can manage and see what is occurring at each building during the assessment process, but will also require us to do some infrastructure changes to our network. Those are the two key items we wanted to draw your attention to with that. Thank you.
A few additional items regarding scheduling. The state of Illinois has selected school districts to participate in a field test of the PARC assessment that will be occurring this spring. Additionally, they've released the dates for the PARC assessment for 2015 and those are the dates we are beginning to plan for so that we are ready. Additionally, we'll be having and have already started individual building meeting conversations focused on technology, the needs regarding furnitures, fixtures, infrastructure and equipment, as well as any potential staffing needs. Our next steps are to come back to you at the end of March with a specific plan outlined and a thorough analysis of each building and adjust any information that we receive from PARC along the way through this process. At this time, are there any questions?
I'll just make a statement, there was a, I don't know if she's still here, I think it was you. You were asking about funding and how costs happen. This is a really great example of like a good idea that becomes an unfunded mandate. What an unfunded mandate is, is the state says, "Hey, we've got a really good idea. We've got this really great assessment. You think it's good?" We're like, "Yeah, we think it's good." The state's like, "Do it." It's going to cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars to prepare our schools with the testing labs and those things necessary to do PARC. So, this will, I sat through some really detailed and extensive work that our technology department put together to talk about all the different ways we have to upgrade our labs and how are we going to have teachers do this, how are we going to have students do this? So it's one of those examples where the state has a really good idea and they implement it, but then we have to pay for it. And that money has to come from somewhere. Typically, those are referred to as unfunded mandates and PARC is a really good example of one of those.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Always thorough.
Okay, moving down the list.
Next, school calendar.
Yes, sir. Information report 14.4 is presenting the 2014-2015 school year calendar for your review and consideration. As I have mentioned in previous meetings, the calendar committee that developed this recommended calendar consisted of certified and classified staff members from all grade levels, along with union representation and parent representatives as well. We take into consideration state guidelines, required legal holidays, election days, collective bargaining agreement language, and input received from various internal and external stakeholders in creating a calendar that was as conducive as possible to providing students with quality instructional time. Community may know, and I'm sure the board does recall, that we previously presented a calendar for information, and that calendar was posted online, and we let our community and encouraged our community to provide feedback on the calendar, and we received a great deal of feedback. Taking that feedback into consideration, the board sent the committee back to the drawing table to make some slight adjustments to the calendar, and so that is what we are presenting you today. We did note a concern when the committee met regarding the length of the semesters being imbalanced. This is especially problematic at the high school level for semester-long courses. For example, a course that only runs one semester and it's not sequential. So if a semester is ten or fifteen days longer than another, that presents a problem in terms of covering the content appropriately. Also, at middle school, we have our elective courses, our specials, and then just in terms of the curriculum being balanced, it also presents a problem. This calendar that's being presented to you for information, the semesters are unbalanced. However, you just heard about PARC, which is the new state assessment system that will be put into place. When we take into consideration the number of days that will be required for the testing of PARC, those all occur in the second semester. They will occur at March and May of the school year. So when we take into account those instructional days that will be lost to assessment, the imbalance of the semesters is not as great. And so, once the committee discussed that, we felt that it would be appropriate to recommend the second semester be longer so that we can account for those missed instructional days due to the state-required assessments. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will be bringing this calendar back for your approval.
Any questions? I want to thank Member Saicourt for her hard work on this and taking it back our couple issues that we had and working it through the committee. Moving down the agenda. This is the one you all are waiting for, I'm sure, Legal Services. Thank you. Association Reports.
Good evening. I originally was coming before you to present and ask for reassurance that we maintain safety in all the buildings, to look at the protocols that are in place right now and the practices that are currently being used, and to enhance and bolster those practices. Listening to the other community members that come up, and especially Tiffany, who's a former student of mine and who did an excellent job presenting and sharing her concerns, had very many of the ones that I had also wanted to be reassured about. Listening to the answers that you have presented to her and the other community members has at least led me to believe that you are looking at the different protocols that are currently in practice and looking to enhance those protocols and practices that will help hopefully ensure, although we know we never can totally protect the buildings, but to ensure better protections for all the different campuses. As we know, we want the students and the staff to be focusing on education and not worrying about their own safety, as Tiffany had also pointed out. So I would like to continue with the dialogue at the union level to find out what you are planning on doing, what enhancements, what changes you're making. Also, concerns are in student aggressive behaviors, the policies that are going to be in effect, or any changes in those policies across the district, and to keep an open dialogue. One of the things also I wanted to suggest, I know there is that State Safety Committee that you had, that you have Leroy involved in, but we also had one that we were also involved, that Rick Goojus had led, and would like to see that reconvened because that also helps to keep an oversight on different safety issues that do come up in the district and the reoccurrence of certain safety issues. So I was saying, thinking that would be a good, another way to foster and promote and to oversee the safety of our district and of the students and of the staff. So I look forward to any comments or responses or continuation of dialogue with regards to the safety of our staff and our students so that education can continue. And I guess that's it for now. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep you informed. Real quickly, I want to talk about something while she's sitting down. I think it was Member Goojus, myself, Dr. Mitchum, Mr. Brown. We had dinner about a month and a half, that's probably two months ago, with some of the foremost experts in the world on how to keep buildings secure, including people who protect consulates in very volatile areas. We are probably still collecting some information back from them, or they're getting some information from us. There's just conversations about what, and we were told, and I was kind of impressed by this one individual who is, I won't name him by name because he deserves the secrecy he deserves, but-
But he protected Karzai from Afghanistan.
He's protected the president of Afghanistan when he was elected and as the personal director of security. These guys told Leroy, you guys are way ahead of the curve, a lot further ahead than most school districts. And I just think that's something that needs to be brought up. And these are some major, major security companies that were represented in this little dinner, and it was a great comfort to know. It doesn't always equate to what happens, what happened last week, but I certainly want to, you know, give Mr. Brown his props for what he has already put in place. And those guys were sitting there, they're going, wow, you know, at a school level that you guys have done some of the things you've done. So, next, AFT Valley View Council? No report. Thank you. Valley View Office Council? No report. Thank you. Any old business before the board this evening? Any new business before the board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Hi, please state your name and where you're from, even though I know who you are.
I'm Colleen Doughty, and I'm from Bolingbrook. Two weeks ago, I asked a couple questions about annual reports, and thank you for giving me that information. I also asked about the accreditation, and again, thank you. One of the things I did not get, and I still think the public is interested in, is the board is supposed to set goals, academic improvement goals. And I didn't get those. I don't know what the board sees their goals as, and how are we measuring them, and are we meeting them, and that, I would like to know what those goals are that the board has established.
I would think it's our strategic vision. Was that not presented, given to her?
Now, the strategic vision, is that the board established that, or was that the superintendent?
That was our community, the board, everybody.
I just, I just, you know, in general, so there's not like three goals that we're measuring progress on our vision. I mean, I get the vision, and I did find where the vision was discussed in great detail, and how that vision came to fruition, the new view and all that. I do get that. So there is like no three or four goals that the board has set, other than the general vision that we, because the vision is-
Can you be more specific? Are you talking like the board has a goal of ACT growth of one point, something like that?
Yeah, something that's measurable, that's quantifiable, that we can say, this is our vision, this is how we think we're going to meet our goals, and this is how we're going to measure whether our vision is coming into fruition. And you don't have to answer it now if you want to go.
Maybe we'll specify a section out of the document, perhaps, to make it a little more clear.
Yeah, and it is, there is a lot of documents, and I haven't even read through all of them. So I'm not, believe me, this is not a finger-pointing thing at all. I just, there's a lot of information. This is my very second meeting, so I don't understand how some of this works, and I just wanted to get that clear. I had also asked if there had been any kind of independent audit or anything, and there was not. However, talking to many people, teachers and stuff, they've come back to me and said, oh, yes, there was, and I don't know, and I think maybe I didn't make myself clear. But having done some more research, there was some discussion on the district strategic plan back in 2013, and Dr. Kelly Gilbert and Dr. Sharon McNeely had presented with Dr. Mitchum their strategic plan. And I think what the general consensus is from the people who have brought this information to me and asked me to ask the question was, did Sharon McNeely do any kind of reporting or seeking information through our school district and report back to maybe Dr. Mitchum and the board about how well the policies that are in place, any kind of report that was generated from that work with those two people that the community could see?
I think that's- In the development of the strategic plan, she was involved in gathering input from the community, as well as collecting data, for example, student achievement data, and taking all of that information and distilling that information into helping us create objectives and create goals. And so that's what her role was. Now, I wanted to specify about that Advanced Ed Accreditation, which is an external review team, and this is an international organization, so there's organizations around the country that get accredited through that process. Those individuals are from external institutions, secondary and post-secondary, and they did come into our high schools. And some teachers, perhaps some that you talked to may recall, that they did ask questions. We have to submit a copious amount of artifacts and data. They go through all of that. They have focus groups, they collect data as they visit classrooms, and RHS, Romeoville High School, was the school that most recently completed that last year, and those are the reports that I shared with you. So, that may be what the staff recalls.
No, I think, I think what they're asking for is maybe that data that Dr. McNeely had accumulated, because that data was used to formulate our plan. And I think that parents and the community in general would like to maybe have access to that data, and is that something that we can have access to?
I certainly can ask. In terms of like the raw data that she looked at, I mean, anything that was submitted in terms of, you know, pages and pages of survey responses and things like that, I'm certain that that's available. I don't have access to it at this moment, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question regarding the format of these meetings, because I don't, I don't understand some of it, and I'm just curious as to how it works. You guys go through this very quickly, and I did get to look at the minutes and the attachments and everything. So, just the process that you guys follow, if you could share that with us. You go through and you say the treasurer's report, do we approve it? My guess is that you get all of this information way in advance, and that you're studying it, and that's when you would bring up, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Three, four days.
So three, four, three or four days in advance, you get all of these reports, and you review them, and then you come up with your own personal, you don't talk amongst yourselves, or at least not more than two of you at a time, and you formulate any questions you have, you bring it here. This is where you have the discussion, you don't have the discussion outside of this meeting?
No, sometimes we do have discussion in executive session.
But only about, only about the things that are allowed to be talked about in executive session. But we do, we do have the ability to, if I see on the treasurer's bill some costs I don't understand, I will email Mr. Grzafi and say, I don't understand what this Title I funding number is. Because often, I'll email him then, because if I ask right now, he doesn't have access to look at that. What is this Title I hundred? Hundred and ten thousand dollars, what do we spend that on? You know, so I would email him that question separately. That does not go to the whole board. That's just a email that I send to him and copy Dr. Mitchum.
I guess the reason I ask that is because each of you have your own individual strengths, and, you know, maybe the budget report isn't something that is a strength to every single one of you. If you ask the question to him, and the rest of you don't ask the question because you don't know, then how is that decision made well, I guess?
That's a good point. Normally, what happens then when I ask a question is I do repeat it here, but it's not the first time he's heard it. So he has an answer.
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah, okay. I was just curious. One of the other, I did print out the second reading. I didn't understand that terminology. What was the most recent second reading?
It was on the-
Yeah, what does that mean, second reading? Now, I guess that you, am I doing that? No.
A second, a second reading really just gives time for people to look at it. Instead of like, we just did it in one meeting, it gives time for people to look at it, digest it, decide if they want to-
Like, for example, with the board policies that we update, we get advice from the Illinois Association of School Board has a policy service, and they make recommendations to updated changes, so their legal team does. And so then we get that at the district, and we review it, and then we forward that to our legal team. So Cindy Hanson, right there, for example, will review the policy, and she'll make any suggested changes to that policy. And then we bring it to the board and say, this is for your information. So they have a chance to read it and digest and ask any questions. And so tonight, what you saw was second reading of policy, and for their approval, and that group of policy was approved. Now, a lot of times, the tweaks in the policy are minor, and it may just be some legal change, something that we were required to add, or something like that. It's usually not a significant change to the policy. Sometimes it's a new policy that school districts are required to incorporate.
So, for example, in that, the one that is for the instruction, curriculum development, if you turn the page to the very last, there's a legal reference, a cross-reference, adopted, amended, amended. There's an amended that's blank. Is that when it's going to be approved? It'll be amended for whatever date currently it's going to be. I mean, I, this must be just a minor change to this, and you guys have seen it a million times, and-
Okay, so you see adopted, that's when it was first adopted by the school district and approved by the school board. And then amended would be any time that it was brought back to the board for reading and approval. So you saw the last one there was September 24th, 2007. Upon tonight's approval, it will have today's date as that new amended date. And so then, when the ISB, which is the Illinois State Board of Education, comes in, and the Regional Office of Education does our compliance audit, which I mentioned happens every four years, and that will take place this May, they actually go through each of these policies and see that we have updated policy on file. They see that we are enacting that policy, and they ask for artifacts and documentation, and they will spend the better part of a week in our district going through each of these, and how they line up with the implementation and the supporting documents.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any announcements by the board this evening? Mr.-
I do. I actually wanted to thank a couple of organizations and some individuals from our community. As you guys heard earlier, we had some gifts that were presented to the board for approval. The University of Illinois presented a gift to Independence Elementary School, so I want to thank them. Mr. William K. Keith also presented a gift to LuKansik Middle School, or the Drama Club. He's supporting with sound equipment, or some funds for the sound equipment. British Petroleum, Fabric of America Fund is also supporting, gave us a gift for John LuKansik Middle School. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources presented a gift, thanks to Mr. Dave Murdes, who wrote a grant for Tebbit Elementary on schoolyard habitation grant. And then we have a local business called Watronics out of Bolingbrook, who gave a really nice substantial gift for eBooks towards Tebbit Elementary, so we want to thank them as well. ExxonMobil also presented a gift to Romeoville High School to fontem our math and science program. So I just wanted to thank those organizations and those individuals.
Next.
Yes. A lot of things have been said over the last couple weeks, and, as Dr. Mitchum said, my heart is heavy too about a lot of things that's going on in this district, in this community. Before I proceed, I need to ask Member Hanson a question. You mentioned something last board meeting about the different cultures that was in your congregation. And I want to make sure before I repeat that statement, that you felt after last board meeting that we were somewhat divided as a community. Is that a correct statement, or if you would?
Are you talking about what we had discussed in executive session?
No, this was with your comments after last board meeting, when you talked about the different cultures, I believe you, forty-six or something like that you said. And Pastor Suzette had came up to the podium too, and you made some comments to that effect. So I was just trying to get clarity on that statement that you had made about the cultures and about the community.
Trying to recall that. Can't quite recall and all of that. I can address the fact of, you know, we live in a multi-ethnic community, and pastoring a multi-ethnic church, it takes a lot of time to, you know, really create environments where everyone is at the tables and talking and things like that. I don't quite remember the whole conversation with which you're referring to in the sense of what was happening during that time. I'm sorry.
No problem. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to state it, because I thought what I heard you was the same thing that I'd heard. I heard Pastor Suzette, and I agree with about the devicesness, not only, we're talking about culture-wise, we're talking about community-wise between Romeoville, Bolingbrook, the school personnel, this administration. So I was going to echo you if that's indeed what I heard.
Well, I would concur with you, Member Campbell, that I do feel that we do have that in measure throughout. So I, you know, I would concur with you. I think we're all feeling, you know, a measure of that in everything that's happening.
Okay. So what I was going to say about these other comments and- So what I was going to say about these other comments and, sorry, President Quigley, I was, I'm glad you came up Ms. Colleen because I had a statement down here to ask President Quigley that you had given a list of concerns and had he as the president addressed it all your issues, so I can cross that out. And then, which I should have started with because you guys know I'm not going to pray tonight, but I do pray and I do a lot of praying and so those of you who do that also, I would think that that was the greatest things that we can do for this Valley View Community School District. And as Member Vanega said, we have some supporters, community and business owners that might not have students in the district, but they are also a part of this Valley View community. As we keep talking about, it takes a village to raise a child. I attended the Black History Program and a young man enlightened me on some things about my own culture, but he was saying, as you're going through the village, you know, what are you doing while you're going, what type of take a village to raise a child, but what are you doing and what insights are you getting from being in the village? So that's my first question to this board and to this community, what insights are you getting in the village? And then also, would like to thank all of those that came to the board meeting last week and even here tonight. And I want personally to say anyone who wants to come and address this board that you're more than welcome with any concerns that you have and you're not just a just, you are a valuable part of this community and especially created wonderfully in God's eyesight. And to Tiffany, we thank you because security is going to be always a part and safety and I do trust Mr. Brown because some forty years ago, Mr. Brown was the keeper of the Sears Tower and I started working there when I was sixteen years old. So safety has always been a concern and I think about the village and about safety. I think about when I was twelve years old, when the gunpowder went across my nose as a kid. So safety has always been, I believe, the adults and even the young people, more so today about being safe. And again, I think that the only way we truly are going to get these things aired out, the young lady brought again about having the community forums with Dr. Mitchum and President Quigley and the rest of this board, I'm going to bring back the same concern that I said before and since it's a lot less action in here tonight, I hope it's taken seriously, is that, that meeting that we, that I suggested, and I know I'm only one of the seven voices up here, but I think I feel a little of the pain of the individual sphere and I think I've, I've felt some pain having a six-year-old special needs child today, it's a little pain, so I think I know a little bit about pain and so I think I hear the pain of the community and for us not to take it lightly about the safety, about the culture, about bringing things to the table that we need to discuss, I will repeat a statement I made at the last meeting that a lot of emotions, a lot of concern, concerns, excuse me, was brought about because of Mr. White's resignation, but that was just something that was already there. So I do pray that we do do that and then I guess the last thing that I probably want to do because I feel led to do that is to apologize, we as a board do have a code of ethics and so again with those people who came to the board to keep us ethical and to believe that you can come here and be respected. And I felt, I say we, you know, I don't feel directly, but because I am a part of this board and I do take that, I, I actual forgive this because some of our behavior that I've heard some of you said was not so inviting last board meeting, whether some of you said that we, our body language did not say that we were interested in your comments, whether not our tone was right, we know what the body language says. And so I do ask you guys to forgive us as a board for those things and to continue to come back, Ms. Colleen and the rest of you with all your concerns and be steadfast, unmovable until you get the answer that makes, we might not agree with you, but until you get the answer that you need, Tiffany and the rest of this Valley View community, that's what I ask of you.
I want to take the second to thank a couple of people, but first, Vicki, I think that's a great idea, I'll try to get some time off work and we'll try to get that safety committee. It was a different safety committee than the safety committee about more security, it was more about workplace safety and working with staff and administration to keep people safe in the workplace from, everything from slips and falls to getting bit, you know, and everything that happens in between. And I think one of the things that came out of that was some really good dialogue, so, well, and some teamwork, working together on one issue in the same direction, so we need to start that back up. The people I wanted to thank were Mr. Brown, I, I know in moments like this, it often gets portrayed that we're being reactive, but in the five years I've been on this board and when I got here, you handed me a document that was about YAFIC, which are security protocols and the things that we do with staff members and teachers and students to keep this district safe and I know that you work on that constantly, not just when there's an incident that happens. So I just want to let the community know and you know, sir, that I appreciate it and this community benefits from it. And that kind of, it benefits it from the sake that, you know, I have three children in this district and I feel, feel safe with them in our school district. But that brings another point, that it seems to be a litmus test almost, that you have to have children to be in the district, to be concerned or have a valuable role in this process. So it pains me that I feel like I have to justify my care by mentioning that I have three children in this district, but over half the people that support this district, over half the people that live in this district have no children in this district and they have a voice too. They have a role and a place in these conversations and it should not be minimized because they don't have children in the district. I feel a need to, to speak for them, I also feel a need to speak for Dr. Mitchum on, on his behalf, not that he needs it, but Dr. Mitchum, our friendship is based in your integrity. Our friendship is based on your love for the children of this district. When I got assigned to this district, I was an upset parent of a kindergarten that couldn't understand why nobody in the district seemed to understand that half-day kindergarten wasn't working well. And while we changed that too late for my own children, when I met and I got put on the school board and I met principals, they all kept telling me to talk to you. Your dedication to the school district, your dedication to the children in this district, for anyone who's taken the time to look even to the surface is unquestionable. I speak with you often and your concern is all the children in this district, always. It has been since you were principal, I'm sure it was when you were the track coach at Romeoville High School. That has been your concern since I've met you. I take great umbrage with those that would question it because truly they don't know you. You're a man of great honor and I appreciate deeply the service that you've done for this district. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Crystal, Dan, Debbie? Real quickly, I had the opportunity to attend the Community Service Council when we're talking about services, organizations in this community. Community Service Council provides a lot of services for people who have issues that need to be resolved, housing finances, meals, so on and so on and so forth throughout the township and Carol Penny, the Village Clerk of Bolingbrook, is the president of that board and they had a very nice fundraiser yesterday and they, we talked about people who are not necessarily vested in the community, but those are some of the people who help out enormously and that's what makes us, I, I've been, in my day job, I go to a lot of communities and I see a lot of towns and I travel the state and I've never seen an area like this area that steps up to help people in all facets, it's, it's amazing, from those who need food and clothing in times of emergencies, food pantries, Community Service Council, H2O that helps at-risk kids, the Heart Foundation that helps kids alternative to suspensions, we have all kinds of great things going on in these two communities, Bolingbrook and Romeoville and I'm going to tell you, we could be in a lot worse situations if we were somewhere else and I, I think it's a pat on the back to everybody that lives here and all, especially a pat on the back to the people who volunteer and help and donate finances, donate time, whatever it is, because that's what really makes this all work more than anything. With that, unless there's any other comments, motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion second, all of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
All of us saying a same sign, we stand adjourned. Have a great evening, drive safe.